...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving along, we have a gentleman here who has come in early to deal with an issue on our agenda, which is a culvert pipe on Town Farm Road, Mr. Tom Gravel. Just in deference to his time and so forth, we would like you to start our meeting with that and we'll go immediately after that to public comment.
First, I'd like to say thank you to a gentleman first. I have been to the highway department, board of health, COMCOM, and building department to try to solve the problem that I have. Everybody's pointing fingers to another department. There's a culvert pipe that goes on the upside, under Town Farm, onto a second house lot that I own, just a one acre parcel. Culvert pipe lands almost in the middle of 150 feet of road frontage that I have. It is considered a global house lot. It did perk. It's all fine and dina. But the problem that I have is when they, I saw Jason prior to any of this construction going up Town Farm, the new water line, I asked him if we could move it down a little bit, because I knew that they were gonna have to do some sort of paving. And it'd be easier, instead of trying to snake the water line under the culvert pipe, just remove it, slide it down 40, 50 feet, maybe, and just run the water line along or the outgoing side, along the edge of myself and my immediate neighbors' property. He said, "Well, I don't, we can't move it. I'll give you as much pipe as you want." I said, "Well, if I add 200 feet to it, you have to service it. You have to have the right to service it. If it's under a driveway or buried under my yard, or the potential yard, it's gonna be there, you can't legally service it." So I've asked that again, just move down, still on my property, I don't have a problem with it. It's just that because of the land slopes, I'm gonna do a two-car garage under, there's a new stub for the water line placed within three to four feet of the outflow of the culvert pipe itself. So I wanted it there. There's a break in the stone wall, that's where I wanted to have the driveway go in, and it was gonna have the water line go into the house, a little bit unhangled. But the waters dumped there, now since they did all the road construction, all kinds of water and silt are running down the road, flowing onto my property. Right now, I don't have a problem with it. The culvert pipe seems to be blocked up because all the silt filled up the pipe. Now they gotta fix it.
Yeah.
Again, it's not, not for me to do.
Yeah.
Okay? But I'm just asking if we can get it moved downhill, because they haven't done the swell yet. You have to do a new swell all the way up the hill and then fix the road. Because right now, it's like this, and you need a formal drive to even think about going up that hill.
I know.
Okay? I would like to be able to have it moved down to about 10 feet from the edge of my property, add a few lengths of pipe so that it doesn't affect my neighbor, because he has the right not to be flooded, have it continually going downhill, and eventually it ends up in the little creek that's down here at the bottom of the pipe company. If they was to make it all the way down.
Yeah.
I don't think, thought of the thing considered as...
That must be Prince River, right? Prince River, down nearby EJ Prescott?
Yeah, I don't even know what that, I don't know.
It would get to it, yeah.
Usually, it doesn't, it never dries up, dries up.
Yeah.
Yeah. It infiltrates.
But this year, there's so much damn rain, it's great.
Yeah.
But I've asked Jason, he points fingers, this person, April.
Who did he point the finger at, just for curious?
Excuse me?
Who did Jason point the finger at?
Um, he said that I had to hit conservation.
Okay, for notice of intent and that sort of stuff, is that?
He didn't give me an explanation.
Okay, so he said basically, see the...
Right. I went to their meeting, and the gentleman there was with me, just happened to be there. They were supposed to do a site visit.
Okay.
And email me and y'all with their findings and recommendations to slide it down. They didn't seem to have a problem whatsoever.
Do they show up and do the site visit?
I don't know. They said they would just do it at their leisure, possibly within the next few days. And I said, "Well, it'd be nice if, if, meeting I go to on Monday night, they have a copy of your findings, dah 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 dah."
And this was last week?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I have no idea where that is.
So I'm assuming, let me just paraphrase, that your concern is, okay, for your property and the quality of your property after all of the stuff that's been done on Town Farm Road, that you want to address the fact that you don't want your lot destroyed because we did everything else up there?
Well, you're not necessarily destroying it, but I threatened to mention, was that the outflow of that pipe is within 30 to 40 feet of where I personally did the perk test.
Okay.
Because when Mike Hammond, God rest his soul, if y'all know, I bought the lot, my upper lot and the bottom lot, from Mike. But I did the perk test on my lot, because I have an excavator, it's small. So I did my house, the lot in question, Doug Arnold's lot, and Mike Hammond's old house. I did all, four of those. And so, and I had my, my lot surveyed, and they did find where those spots were, and it's about, you know, 30 to 40, well, screw a day beggar, you know, it's roughly 30 to 40 feet from where the outflow of that pipe is.
Okay.
Now, it means I have to put my septic system right there. I can't have the town water flooding my septic system.
No.
And then the driveway was gonna go under for two-car garage under, so the septic system would've been in the front, driveway on the side, and I can't...
So basically, no one gave you a reason why...
They did not.
Okay, they just said, "Go see the other guy."
They did this.
They see it, they pass it in the book.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think that we will have an opportunity to talk with the conservation commissioners if they did the site visit and so forth, and if, if the towns work and authorized work, because I think Caruso did some of the work, but it was authorized by the town.
It was.
That they would be, you know, a partnership with, he would pay for, we would pay for, either we were gonna pay for the pipe and he was gonna do the excavation, or he was gonna ask, I don't know which way it was.
Correct. From what I understand, he was doing...
But it was a joint, it was a joint venture between Mr. Caruso and the community, as I understand it. So we'll look into it, and...
But that, excuse me, that really wouldn't affect the, the, the pipe. I know the town room's an excavator.
Well, see, my only concern is this, that someone, okay, says, "Well, that's too bad. We did what we needed to do from a town perspective, and now, you know, too bad if his, his lot is ruined." Okay? I mean, I could, I'm just fantasizing the worst case scenario.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
It may not happen at all, but I mean, so my only concern is that we look at it and say, if the, if the roadwork that we authorized and contributed in has contributed to a problem on your property, we do have an obligation to take and look at it and see if, you know, we can address it.
Right, but it's a little bit beyond the, it's not really a, a problem for, say, at the moment. I'm just trying to move the pipe over to redirect the water, so it's not on the center of my lot, it goes down the side of the lot.
Yeah, I think the important thing here, I mean, you know, I think it makes sense to move it while we have the road ripped up.
Yeah.
Well, that was my, my point before you started.
I, I do think we need to hear from CONCOM with their site visit.
Yeah.
I also think we could make sure that it doesn't get permanently put into the place it's in right now until we hear from CONCOM. I think that's the important thing, is to make sure it doesn't get to a point where it is being repaved over and...
Well, I think they're so far away from repaving over that I probably...
Well, it's more of a patching situation there.
How was that a conservation issue? How was that?
Anything conservation-wise would, would go through them, or mass DEP, depending on the extent of it, because...
They sent me their, excuse me, they sent me there because it involved a culvert pipe.
Right.
The only water it sees is when it rains. Of course, lately, it's been every couple of days, yes, I agree with that. But there's, I looked at the pipe today, and it looked like it's full, solid with silt that ran down from the top of the hill all the way down. And I don't need to be a stickler, but I'd like to know why there was no erosion control, because the road is like this.
It is.
Which I don't care about.
It's a good question.
But if you or I did it on our property...
Oh, yeah.
And, boy, hey, it'd be a big problem.
Yeah, so, so the reason it's CONCOM, though, is because we, what CONCOM was going to look at is what areas being impacted by it. Would shifting it down potentially flood a different area? Would it potentially impact a different area by having to bring it farther? Where the swells haven't been built yet, I don't think it's going to be a problem, if I had to guess, but I think that's where CONCOM having a site visit would be, getting a response from them is the appropriate step, but also making sure it doesn't get fixed in place where it is now without having an understanding of, without CONCOM first getting there is the other aspect of it.
So, so our, our next steps will be to contact conservation and to get some information specifically for you, after we've talked with them about the site visit and so forth.
And also to contact Jason and the DPW to make sure they're aware that we are waiting on CONCOM before finalizing where that would go.
I'm just trying to do it before they make things on the road.
Makes sense.
Exactly. Once, once something gets fixed, you don't wanna touch it right after to have to move it.
Right. I didn't know if they were gonna, I was understanding that they were paving the whole road like they did behind the upper deck. That one was terrible.
Well, someday they are, but it's definitely not on our paving list.
It's one that I would like to have on the paving list soon, but it's not on for this year.
I don't have a problem with the patch job, because they're gonna keep the traffic down to a minimum, and it is quite entertaining when they bottom out in the road on the...
Oh, yeah, I'm right on the other side of it. I go over once in a while, just to see.
Yeah, so it's entertaining, but everybody needs a car at midnight, 1:00 in the morning, you know? I mean, does that cut off to go home and whatever, but it does have its slight entertainment value. But right now, it is just all mud. It's running everywhere, the pipe's full, and now it's bleeding across the street into my property. Again, right now, I don't have a problem with it, but when I go to put the cellar hole in, which I was hoping to get done before now, that this problem arose, that's why I'm here.
Okay. Well, Tom, thank you so much for coming in and speaking with us about the specifics. We'll follow up and...
You need my email or phone number?
Oh, yes, please.
Or I'm going out there, or...
Just if you can, did you put your email there?
I did not, but I can't.
Yeah, would you put your email there?
Sure.
Because that'll be the way we'll probably contact you.
Yeah, again, COMCOM, I gave it to them the other day when they, when I was there.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. But they, I, I expected to hear from them before this meeting.
Okay.
I told them I'd like to have their thought process. I mean, it's just a matter of looking at it.
Yeah.
Right.
Again, this wetlands way down the backside of the property, because there is some wetlands way in the back, but does this silt and stuff actually get out on that fire? I don't know. I'm not a scientist, I don't, I'm not gonna, you know?
And I mean, realistically, is moving the culvert going to change? It's not, it's probably not gonna change the distance the water's traveling for infiltration purposes.
No, but, well, it might, because I'd like to add a few lengths of pipe so that it doesn't bother my neighbor.
Yeah.
I don't want them to wash them out. And I had a conversation with them before I went to the COMCOM meeting, that, I said, "Hey, Doug, this is what I'm thinking of doing." He said, "I don't care, I don't give a flood, what do I care?" I said, "You know, I agree, I'm just trying to be respectful, you're my neighbor." He goes, "Well, I appreciate that."
Yeah.
But what's more, I thought is to move it over, add a few lengths of pipe so it just be onto his house, and it doesn't affect anybody.
Okay.
And then, again, I don't have any problem with all my property, I'd just like to move it over so I can put the driveway where the pipe currently is.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I don't, if CONCOM doesn't have an issue with it, I personally wouldn't have an issue with it. I think we just need to get their report.
And they, they were very objective to have it moved over, because it's only a matter of 40 to 50 feet, actually. And they, I wasn't like fighting it, so it didn't go on my property. You know, I'm welcoming it, just let's add a few lengths of pipe, and Jason said, "I'll give you as much as you want."
Yeah.
I'm like, "Well, that's fine, but we still need to be able to access it. We need to access it in, in order to maintain it. If it clogs up, you gotta fix it."
Right.
You know? My intention is to put a house on it and sell it, and then eventually I'll be retiring in Maine, so...
Okay. Well, you're, you're being very solicitous of those people who will be there when you're in Maine.
Well, just trying to be respectful, that's all.
Yeah, great. Okay, so we've, we've gotta talk with conservation, and when, once we do that, we can get back to you and see if what DPW's, how they've been involved and whatever, so...
Yeah, where they're at in that process.
Yeah.
Well, again...
I mean, if you haven't been...
There is no process, unfortunately, sir, because Jason just said, you know, "It's been here forever, we're not, we're not gonna move." Politely, of course, you know, and around about 8:00, we'll see COMCOM, and again, building department, board of health, COMCOM, they all did this. And they actually suggested in the meeting last week that I be here, not to add some more to your plate, but unfortunately, or fortunately, you're the last people before I take matters in my own hands.
Well, I don't know what that means, and I'm not gonna ask.
I'm not gonna ask. Do you want my telephone number on this?
Please, that'd be great. Give me your, the one easiest to reach, whether it be a mobile...
Yeah, I have a cellphone.
Okay, great.
Who has a house home these days?
I don't know, not many, I guess.
This is an extra bill you gotta have.
Yep.
I get my computer from my health. I've got an...
Oh.
Okay, so here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gravel.
I appreciate your time. You have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll return to the order of the meeting minutes and go to the public comment period for 15 minutes. Looks like you're on, and Sam, since you're the only one here tonight.
Hey, well, I don't mind, I don't mind being there. Can I, I have one of these for Sandy. I don't know how, I don't know if she goes by again yet. I want to use this for everyone. Greg.
Thank you.
And, uh, John.
Thank you.
I have one for me, I probably have a label for me. Instead of reading this just yet, last week, we had requests from, through me and by Neil and by me, for the use of that electronic sign. Many times I have asked, in fact, several times, I asked you to make a motion to use the public, the electric, electronic sign for, for whatever purposes. So now we have an issue, we have, we have an electronic sign, we have a lot of people who want to use it. But it seemed to be last, last week, or two weeks ago, when we had this meeting, that you, this board almost refused to allow Neil to use the electronic sign for, he called it the Barry Taxpayers Association, whatever name it was, but it seemed to kind of indicate that maybe he shouldn't have it, or whatever reason. However, that weekend, and nobody was using it, by the way, at that time, Tuesday night, Wednesday, whatever night it was. However, later in that week, we had the car show that used the public sign, whether the car show paid for the use of the sign.
Whether, whether the board even knew that that happened?
Oh, I don't know. But, but someone, if, if the board didn't know it happened, somebody direct, the provider of the sign, which happens to be the chief of police, someone directed him to do that. And then, continuing on that weekend, there was another type of affair at the, at the, at the...
Perhaps it was the autumn, autumn fair, autumn fair.
Whatever it was, the sign was used. So I guess the question was, is we need to have a sign policy, and Neil, Neil was, Neil made a sign, and I moved it around a little bit, and, and we had many people, but we need to have a plan, we need to have a direction, a process. Do we pay, do people pay for the use of the sign? Do citizens get it for the use free? Do only committees are allowed to use it? And there's, there needs to be a, a, a regulation until everybody can get together and decide what kind of sign to have on the carpet, right? Until.
Well, well, I mean, I certainly agree with you that there needs to be some sort of a policy, and there should not be the chief on his own making those decisions, there should be a policy.
I think, to some extent, the, the fair, I, I didn't go to the car show, that's on me, but with the fair, there were roads that were being closed down, so it was alerting drivers that there was going to be a traffic situation.
I don't, I don't know whether it was alerted, I didn't read the sign.
And the, and the one for the autumn fair was primarily about parking in Rocco's lane.
Oh, no, it was...
Yeah, but, but it doesn't matter.
We need to have a process.
Yeah, I agree.
And, so, and at some time in the future, I'm sure, this group may want to use the sign. And probably be logical to come up with a plan, and, and by the way, the hall was left clean, and then, and the chairs were put back in order, and it was just like nobody was in it.
Excellent.
And the door was opened, and the door was closed, and it was, it worked out wonderfully.
Good.
I guess the $25 was a donation. Whatever it was.
Well, understand, when, when people use, use that facility, maybe they're not as, as careful as you guys were at that meeting. Oftentimes, the chairs are not put back, there's trash to be removed, and on a rainy, which it was a rainy night, I mean, I don't know what the floor was like, but the floor had to be cleaned because all that rain and stuff distracted, and come winter, it is an absolute disaster when you use that, because the salt and sand is in there, and the floors have to be washed and cleaned, and it's extra...
Maybe they need rugs in front to pick up the salt.
Well, you can pick some of it up, but you can't pick it all.
And then you're cleaning rugs.
Yeah.
So anyway, so that was the request. I hope the select board can come up with a plan, and if you want to discuss it, you can discuss it with me, you can discuss it with Neil, but this, this meeting, just like the last Barry Taxpayers Association, ultimately, the last one ultimately was the, for a benefit for the town of Barry, because of what occurred at the last one. This one, hopefully, will be for the benefit of the town of Barry, for its growth and...
Hopefully.
Hopefully, that's the goal. Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
Thank you, and...
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, moving along. We have approval of the meeting minutes, which requires a vote on the September 5th meeting minutes.
I move to approve the September 5th meeting minutes.
We have a motion made in, to approve the September 5th meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made in second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a vote. Moving on to the next area, which is to town administrator report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, just a couple of updates on my report this evening. The first is involving the upcoming town administrator interviews, and I'd like to provide the board, I think you, don't know if you have it in the packet or not, but let me hand it out. Mark, I have one for you also.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so what I've handed out is just some communication involving the upcoming town administrator finalist interviews. You have scheduled the meeting on the 27th. The first interview is at 4:15. The consultant from municipal resources, Mr. Stapczynski, will be here at 4:00 PM. He'll brief the board on the interview and the organizational process. I have a copy of, so the interviews are scheduled, one hour apart, with a little bit of time in between. The draft motion...
Are they hour, the, an hour of each?
Yeah, they're an hour, but there's a tiny bit of time in between, so it gives you a chance to kinda catch your breath and take a break if you need to. So the last interview concludes at 8:45, thereabouts, and then there's a deliberation and vote. Again, the, the goal was to, if there's a consensus by the board, to make a conditional offer of employment. I have a copy of the motion.
You mean, on the same day?
On the same day, if you wish. If you wish.
Just for one interview, and then we're gonna ki this person?
Um...
I mean, it, does he do a, a, a sort of a scrub of the...
Yes, he's already, he's already gone through.
Okay, okay.
He's already gone through and vetted all the candidates. However, the, if the board were to decide to make a condition offer of employment, it would be upon satisfactory of a background investigation.
Okay.
Which is quite extensive, I've seen the reports that they've done before, and there's an extensive background investigation that they would do, so it would be conditional upon the person's satisfactory. But again, if the board wishes to defer it until an upcoming meeting, you certainly may do so.
Are we going to have an opportunity to get information from them before that, as far as resumes and answers to the questions that they've been asked so far?
Yes. So we'll have that information at the end of this week.
Great.
I'll forward it to the board members, so you'll have a complete packet on all of the applicants, and then when we post the...
And those would still be confidential and only made public on the 27th?
Correct.
Correct.
So the goal is when the, when the, the applicants come in, that's public information.
Okay.
And so those resumes will be uploaded to the town's website, and give people an opportunity to see what the...
So I'm just looking at my calendar here, and just, so the 27th is, what day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
It's the Wednesday, okay.
Would we need an executive session as for, as far as making an offer with regards to compensation?
No.
Or anything along those lines?
No, because all you're doing is you're making, you're making a conditional offer.
Okay.
The, the contract negotiation phase would follow once that person accepts the board's offer, and that would be grounds for executive session. So I did speak with a consultant, he told me that there were, there are four finalists coming before the board. There was a fifth candidate who withdrew her application, so he said, again, you will have a copy of the, 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 resumes in the packet, so that's, and then also included is a listing of potential questions. You're not gonna have an opportunity to do 48 questions in a one-hour interview, but what I do ask you to do is identify, and I'll send this to you electronically, identifying six to eight questions that you think are relevant to the interview process, and it's beyond the questions of tell us who you are, introduce who you are, tell us about your career, which is the normal stuff. And then when you indicate what questions you want to ask, I'll then put them in some type of logical order so that there's kind of a flow to the meeting. So that's kind of the next step. So tomorrow, I will send you a copy of the draft questions.
Are we providing any kind of break for supper, or not, or?
So, um...
It's 4:15 till 9:00. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that, but that's a long haul.
Eat early.
Eat early, okay. I'm good with that.
There's a 10-minute break between each candidate.
I'm okay with that. We'll have a, we'll have a strong cup of coffee.
Okay.
The one I was on of the candidates, so when we do the interviews, I'll meet the candidates and I'll bring them upstairs so that I'm stuck in the hallway.
Okay.
You know, say, standing there, and they don't hear what's going on during the interview, which is certainly relevant to us, so we'll bring them down.
So there's only four interviews?
Four interviews. Like I said, there was a, a fifth person who, who did decline, who was, received another employment offer. And that's part of the reason why...
Yeah, move it along.
The idea is to move the thing along, because what happens is the process is so dynamic, people are applying for many jobs, and there are often jobs in between, so...
Right, mm-hmm. Okay.
So that's, that's the first issue. Second issue is, there was communication from the original school district concerning the Rocco's School. school district concerning the Ruggles School. You received a copy of the email about battery charges that needed to be replaced, a cost between $9,200 and $14,000, depending upon the option. Just a question of whether the board prefers to put this before a vote of our next special town meeting?
For the money?
Yeah, for the money, because it's indicated that it's the town's responsibility.
It is. After $5,000, it's... I don't think we can... They failed to give them their occupancy permit, and we have 400 or 500 kids in there with no occupancy permit. I don't think we should delay.
I know we're going to need a special town meeting in this fall to address our union contract settlements, so this would probably be an appropriate time to include this article.
I know that we've talked for years about an emergency generator at the school. I don't see us funding, having the capacity to fund that at this point in time. So it looks like if we wanted to do the cheap one, it's $9,200. But if we want to put the LED lights in, it's $5,000 more. And so we'd have to make a commitment, I guess, before the town meeting to... I mean, we're going to have to do the minimum, if not the maximum.
Yep.
So I would suspect if we had to, we could operate. I'm not thrilled about that, but anyway.
And we could, and that would get them their funding.
Immediately.
Fourth with.
Yeah.
You want us to put that on the agenda and invite in someone from the schools to the next meeting?
I don't know if we really need them to be here. I mean, I hate to give them one more meeting to do.
I agree.
So, I mean, I think it's up to us to say the LEDs or the $9,200 regulars. The LEDs are going to last a whole lot longer. I don't see any possibility of any recent time that we're going to put a big generator over there.
Why does the board not prefer to use the ARPA money for this?
Oh, we just had that conversation. Am I talking too quietly?
No, but you said you prefer not to use the...
I prefer not to use it because we are still grappling with trying to get broadband expansion in the community and to try to get, you know, our, you know...
So you may not have enough money?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying.
I mean, we may, but we've been... Yeah, we keep nickel and dime in ARPA, and it's sort of... When my daughter was a teenager, I used to call it the Whitney School of Finance. I'll pay that back for your mom when I get home. And so that's kind of the ARPA money because then the DPW will want a big piece of equipment. They want us to pay ARPA. We've bought trucks with ARPA. We've put the big parking lot in at Felton Field. I'm really encouraged by having some conversations with playground people that we'll get a playground out of our ARPA money, which is the one thing, the only thing they ask for.
So you would rather prioritize the ARPA money?
Yeah, I mean, I... Yeah, I think if you go to the town and you say, "We need the lights to make the exits and entrances of our schools safe. The building inspector then will give us an occupancy permit for your public school," my guess is the hands will go in the air. I don't think they're going to fight about it. I think that if you wanted to do it more quickly, we definitely could at least, at this point, use ARPA money. But by the time they actually do it and get a bill, we probably will be at a town meeting and could make a different decision. I could be wrong. But it's up to the board, I mean, obviously. I mean, we're going to do it, so they should begin to get a specific contractor ready to go. And I mean, I do not feel the necessity of going to the emergency generator thing because I don't think that's happening, but you guys may feel differently. The emergency generator is a good thing for the fact that you would then have a place for the elderly community to go for if they need to. Right now, they go to Quabin, and Quabin has the capacity to handle half the town, quite frankly. But they would prefer to be closer to home. I get that. However, the only thing that this would help was we'd never have school with a generator, other than an emergency dismissal maybe. But there is a less-than-well insulated part of the HVAC system, so we do get freeze-ups sometimes in Ruggles Lane.
Okay.
So that would be... But that's a lot of money. The generators would be very expensive.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So what action are we taking today?
You don't need to take any action today because what we can do is we could add it to the agenda. That would be the appropriate mechanism. Add it to the agenda, give the board an opportunity. I'll get you a breakdown of what we have available for ARPA funding so that you understand what we have. It's unencumbered costs.
And I'll just look the superintendent know that just to have their head of... Their head of plant facilities to just come in and chat with us about why would we spend $14,000?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure he'll have a presentation. And, you know, in hindsight, you know, five years from now, we might all be saying, "Why didn't we vote for that?" Because now there is a big generator in. They have tried several different times to get grants to put that big generator in, and we get nothing from FEMA or anything. It's just it's not... It's not a thing that you say, "Oh, the town doesn't have a place to go." They do. They have the whole high school.
I put it in when there was a request for legislative AMRACs earlier this spring, and we got our money for the 250th anniversary committee, but not for the...
Yeah, but you're talking probably another 100 grand for this.
That's right.
I'm saying at least for that.
It was a few bucks.
Yeah, for that generator. So I guess we put on the agenda, and yes, we're going to fund it. Yes, we're going to fix it.
We'll put it on the next agenda, which will give the board an opportunity to have a discussion.
And I will have Kevin from Clark come from the school to have a conversation with us and to have specific things just ready to go.
Right.
Because we'll have to sign the...
And maybe have a better understanding of what benefits, aside from longevity, for the LEDs for option versus...
Yeah, yeah.
Will you also put on the next agenda some final discussion on the sign issue?
Well, Sam.
Can you do this?
He's still in my heart, of course.
Oh, okay. I mean, I still don't want anybody to forget.
Like, that would happen with you sitting here. Okay. But thanks for letting us know.
I'm glad I can say this with a smile on my face.
And I can respond with a smile on mine. Anyway.
Madam, I just have one last thing before you move on the agenda. The board had previously asked me to look at the town's website and see what options are out there. I had a chance to be involved in an online webinar last week with a company that offers a service. So right now, we have a contract with Gov Office, or they're known as Catalyst, C-A-T-A-L-I-S. We made $4,160 annually, and the site is not really useful. It's not user-friendly. The company I talked to offers a town web is their name. They offer a very impressive product, at least I thought it was impressive, and they have a three-year guaranteed rate. I've asked them to submit a proposal to us. I'd like to go through it, and if I feel comfortable with it, bring it to the board and have your consideration. But...
What is their annual three-year?
So their annual fee would be $3,600, and it would be a guaranteed annual fee.
For three years?
For four years.
Four years.
Four-year guaranteed annual fee, and it would save us money, but more importantly, it would get us a town website that is functional and useful.
That would be nice.
And would be helpful and cap our costs going forward because the costs seem to be...
Is there any startup costs, this additional...
Yeah, so that's going to be part of the proposal.
Oh, good.
But what they will be able to do is migrate all of our information into totality. And so in the proposal, it'll address what the startup costs are. That's what I'm kind of waiting for this morning.
And I think that, you know, all of the department heads have to understand this means some work for them as we get the data, you know, that has to be uploaded, that they can't create it without our help.
I agree. And you said updating it is kind of critical?
Yes.
Having a static website that's never updated doesn't have to serve any purpose at all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Greg? Select board. John, you have anything?
Couple of, I guess, almost more questions regarding playgrounds. Have we moved forward with any sort of requests for proposals?
Oh, God, not at this time.
All right. So what do we need to do to...
Well, what we need to do...
Or requests for qualifications?
Yeah, according to the vendors. And this is a great time to buy commercial playground equipment because it's the end of the season.
Yeah.
And there is no requirement that, for example, we hire a certified, qualified, you know, person to install certain things because they do a lot of volunteer... I'm not getting into the volunteer playground. Volunteer playground is when you say to the parents, "Hey, on these weekends, we're going to be building a playground together." I've been through those. I've been, you know, a person shoveling the peystone. But anyway. So what we have to do is we have to go on site, as you know, and get a clear idea of where. The topography, we actually have pretty good topography. We're not trying to put it in the side of a hill or anything. And once they have that, they will begin to say, "Okay, what age level do you want?" And then there'll be different companies will say, "Here's what we would recommend in these spots. Here's the installation costs and so forth."
So we would get a proposal from various companies?
Yes. If we can stay, and I doubt we can. Okay, I think we could at Rice Park stay under $50,000. Okay, because it's not as big a site. If we could stay under $50,000, we wouldn't have to go 30B and do all the kinds of requests for proposals.
I don't think that's a... I would suspect it wouldn't be terrible to...
No, probably not. But if it was under 50, we wouldn't have to. But anyway. So what they will do then is they will come in and they will do a site visit before they give us what they think we should put on it.
Each of the companies.
Yes. They will say, "Do you want a section for two- to five-year-olds? Do you want five-to-12-year-olds? Do you want a sort of married close enough so a parent can bring a seven-year-old and a two-year-old and not have to do different, you know, not save the seven-year-old. No, you have to stay over here on this." They said that's not as easy as you think, you know, for a parent to have different age levels. But so they will come in and give us... Because they have to do a site visit before they will even give us a guess, and they have to know what is the age levels and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I spoke with a principal of a local elementary school, and they did a self-build, and they said that they had... Actually, gave me a lot of good information, and I can get plenty more from him. He said that they've saved, like, I think, I believe it was 40% by doing the self-build. Now, again, that gets into, I don't know what that gets into. I don't know.
Well, the self-build usually means that you have parents, 50% of which don't have a clue what they're doing.
Maybe it could be...
I'm serious.
Maybe a group that you put together that does know what they're doing.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and...
It's a lot more management. I mean, you just have to... If you want to do that...
40% is a lot of money.
40% is a lot of money, but it's also a lot of management on the ground.
Well, playground...
Yeah, but see, you have some expertise in that area, so, in excavation and so forth. So I... Hey, I'm happy to look at...
Do you want to lead it? Lead the self-build?
No. Who is the principal?
I don't know if they want me to mention that.
Oh, okay. Well, then you and I can definitely...
Yeah, absolutely.
And I've talked with the ones over in West Briston, but they had a landscape architect. I mean, this is a massive project. Their request for proposals was 200 pages long. And they... Because they had so much site work to do, and then they had to provide a make-believe playground for the timeframe during which they would be building the thing. So it was quite, quite, quite a process. So I don't think we're heading in that direction, but I think...
Yeah, I think that that might be more if you're looking for a specific grant.
Well, they're looking for maybe a park. Okay, that's a little different. You know what I mean?
That was upwards of $700,000, $750,000.
Yeah, that was a park renovation.
So...
That would be if we took over Felton Field and created a park there with... I'm kidding, but if we did...
So I think what I'm looking for is what our next steps are.
Our next steps are inviting in people to go to the site visit. And I did ask the assessor to tell me who owns the land immediately adjacent to the Public Safety Building between Richard Clark's house right on South Street.
Yep.
If the town owns that already, I don't know how much land we got with the Public Safety Building.
I don't know that.
I know that one of the recommendations from the fire people were to put the fire station there. And everybody said, "Blah, blah, blah. We don't want to do that." So we may own that land. If we own that land, that gives us another option. Other town-owned property that I am aware of that might be a place, nothing that I can think of. I mean, certainly the High Plains Place, other than parking. I think parking could be a problem, but they do indicate there's that road coming down the side.
Yeah.
There's a lot of very unused land there.
Yes, yeah. There is parking.
Yeah.
Does the town own that whole piece of land?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
The whole thing.
Okay.
Yep.
The thing that some people will say is they don't like the location. It seems to be built for that community and not for the whole community. That will be a political thing, but...
Well, I don't live there, but I drive there with the kids.
Well, it's very close to drive for most people in the community. It's not that far.
Right.
And I mean, if you're uptown in the area here, you have Rice Park, and you also have the school playground, but it's never open to the public.
I was there over the weekend.
Yeah, but I mean...
It's open to the public on the weekend, but that's not very effective during the day.
No, it's not. And it's not open a lot of times during the summer because we have summer school there all the time.
Right. My daughter now calls that one the double fun playground because of how separate the two parts of the playground are. So that's a fun one.
So you're going to just check with that principal because if there's anything, information we can get from him and so forth.
He would be more than happy. He told me he'd be more than happy to sit down with me.
Yeah, because I'd love to know who the vendor was for them.
He has all that. He's got all the...
So if you can get all of that information to us, that's great.
So do we need... It seemed like you were saying we needed a plot plan in place or some sort of sketch first before we have...
We need them to show up at the site, and we...
Them being multiple vendors?
Yes.
Okay.
And what they will do... They don't have to be there simultaneously because we're not bidding at first. But we need to know from the assessors. We have to have an assessor's map for them.
Yep.
Which is pretty easy to get. I talked to Jesse about that.
Okay. Are there any dates set for any of that?
No, no, not at this time. I have not had an opportunity to do that, but obviously we need to do that within the next six weeks, I would say. And it's not an impossibility to have the build in early spring and to have the program operational for the summer.
Right, especially if this is the time of year to be purchasing the equipment.
Yes, it is. And even if you have purchased the equipment and stored it.
To keep it moving.
Not that we do a great job in storing things we buy, but just saying. I'll leave that at that. But so, yeah, I'm very excited about the amount of stuff you can purchase. It's like it's 40% off before you even start right now.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, some of the pictures look great, but it's really going to be, you know, going to someplace and looking at it and saying... Because it looks great in the picture, but it may not be great online. I did look up some splash pad things, not in any detail, but those don't seem to be a big deal at all to put together.
Yeah. When I was speaking with someone at CMRPC, they mentioned how any water aspects tend to be, you know, looked on very favorably by the state, too, when they, you know, assess different aspects of things.
And it's supposedly, you know...
Supposed to be a good benefit to communities.
Yeah.
So anything that helps regulate people.
So what I will do is probably talk...
Temperature.
We know children hate water.
Yes.
So what we can do is just set up... What it's going to be hard to do is for me to get the vendor on a date. The vendor's all at the same date. We may have to do more than one meeting, and then it will impose upon your time, you know, and it'll be probably during the day or early, very late afternoon. And I'm thinking we only have really two sites.
Yeah.
That we're looking at now, unless we own all that land by the safety building, and then we could decide what could we do there, or do we want to do anything there.
Yep.
There's a good part of it, but then it's not like it's around where children live. It's just there.
Yeah, and then I think once we do have some sort of proposals, you know, if it is higher, you know, we'd have to go through that whole process to get...
Yeah.
But we could definitely open it up for public input at some point.
You and I both know, we can say to the vendors, "We need some boilerplate stuff for putting together an RFQ or RFP. It will be provided for us, I'm sure."
Yep.
Okay. So I'm just going to... I'll just make some time... Is Saturday a bad time for anybody? Like, Saturday morning? Is that like, "Oh, God, don't make anything on Saturday morning"?
To meet with people for this, I could be available for...
Okay.
It's week by week, but...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just came back.
Okay. Okay, I'll do the best we can.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And you know what? Almost all of these vendors are from the south. There's a place...
The only one I know of is...
There's one at Blackstone Valley, somewhere in Blackstone. I can't get a response from them.
I think there might be one in Marlboro somewhere. I've seen it off Route 9 somewhere, but yeah.
It might... Because some of these, these are commercial playgrounds. They're not the things you could put in your backyard.
Right. I mean, you could, but it would...
Yeah.
Wouldn't really make sense.
No, wouldn't make sense.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to check on, the DPW commission meetings. I know you said you were going to look into that for cameras.
I'm working on that.
Oh, good.
Okay, I will tell you that I've got information out to Rich, our tech person, and I indicated to him that we cannot wait for, you know, permanent installed camera systems as we have here. We need to be on the ground with the setup. It becomes as simple as a person could possibly use, and that we have to hire somebody, maybe a student from, you know, either Quabin or from Monty Tech or even a person in the public who would run this setup. And I don't care if they don't want to be videoed or not, we're going to video. And that would be our... For the next six to eight months, we would have video equipment available that, as I said to him, portable. And we will do portable, you know, recordings. I just don't know the way in which they will download it and how long it will take to download. Some of these meetings that are very brief, it's no big deal. But sometimes this meeting goes a little long, but that's taken care of.
Yeah. It wouldn't be immediately there. It would be, you know, I don't know what his timeline would be, if it would be the next day or within a week.
He seems to make me feel that he's not interested in doing any more downloading of anything.
Okay, so we don't have a process for even uploading this yet?
He does.
He does.
Okay. And I'm sure he would help us in the transition, and he probably knows people that I don't know.
But we would need someone to operate this process.
But I believe that that's not going to be impossible. I mean, there are people around who I know would have, take, you know, work with us on this. But this makes it so that people can't sit around and say, "Well, until you have it, no, let's just do it," and it's in their face.
And I do appreciate that the DPW commission has said they will meet here unless there is video equipment at DPW for the next meeting.
Yeah. And I'm going to do... And I indicated that I would do my darndest to get the video equipment available there so that the excuse of they couldn't go anywhere else because all of their paperwork and files and so forth are located there. So I think we can have a compromise at the...
I still have a question. Really, is ADA, you know, that room is very tight.
Yes, it is.
And I just don't see where someone wanted to get in there and around and be able to do it.
I think you might have to shift the table.
What's that?
I think you might have to...
Where are you going to put it? We've got nine members. Yeah, it's tight. It is tight.
It's very tight.
I don't see how that can be ADA compliant.
I...
I think we ought to...
I do more curious what the egress is than ADA compliance, because people can, you know, usually make way for someone who needs a little more space. But, yeah, I mean, I think egress would probably be the bigger question.
Oh, it is. I mean, there's defined, clear defined laws on how it's supposed to be, so we just got to look at it. Have it looked at. Oh, it is. I mean, there's defined, clear defined laws on how it's supposed to be, so we just gotta look at it. Have it looked at.
Well, we have the building inspector look at it. He can, he can really.
Yeah, uh, we do have an ADA report, uh, from about a year and a half. Yeah, ago. Um, and I, I would have to look at that to see if the DPW building was.
Yeah, no, the statement was made that the, that it was indicated that it was all compliant. I, I agree with you.
That's access to the building, but not for the meeting room.
Yeah, so we have, uh, we have, well, we do have a comprehensive report though for all the buildings in the town.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, so we can look at it.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, so portable, uh, video recording is, um.
Is the direction.
Easy, easy to obtain.
Yep.
And, um, then I think there are a couple of people who have made overtures to, um, not to me personally, but to others that they are very happy to be the person that does this.
Okay.
So if we have people who are willing to do this and we can pay a reasonable rate for that, I think we're in good shape.
I'm sure everybody'd be delighted to be on camera. That'll be good.
Well, all right. Anything else, John?
No, I think those are the only burning questions I have.
About you, um, Mark, anything?
Nope. I was gonna talk about the playground stuff.
Okay, so we'll, um, I, I don't have anything other than to tell you that, uh, we continue to, um, work with. Well, our attorney has recommended, and I am absolutely like, not only concerned that it would be anything we would consider, but as I know Greg and I have talked about it, he's, he has recommended to us that we, um, pursue becoming our own, okay, internet cable provider.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Leverett did it, but Leverett didn't have any service from any vendor and thus, you know, did it in. We don't own the poles. We don't have, we don't have any, um, you know, place where we have the, the foot that you need, you know? We, we have, we have no make ready money. We have no possible way of pursuing that. Um, and whether that's considered to be something that would threaten that current provider to say, oh my gosh, they're gonna turn their town into a money making machine and we're gonna lose all those. Um, they would, I'm sure that they would think it was, um, probably nothing that they would worry about. Um, I would, would like us to consider as a community to say, we have the matrix group that is working on Spring Hill Road. There's probably ten or twelve houses there. We have fifteen houses on Loring Road. I would like to say to our vendor, give you a price for that. That is fifteen houses. We've just got fifteen houses up there, fifteen houses down here. Give us a price for that. And see what they, what, what, could we, could we at least do that? Pick those fifteen houses up. A lot of the other places are very isolated, a house here, a house there. But, so there's only that place and there's a, there's a one other, one other road, um, that has like five or six homes in a row. And maybe we can get a decent price for, just do something.
Just to make that.
I've got a question on that. Um, seeing, being that is that I didn't jump into this until, you know, quite, just quite far along. I had on Spring Hill Road the other day, the, they were assessing the polls and they said they'll be running the cable within, within six months after they had done assessing the polls. And I just.
They should be, they should be way down the road on that process.
That's, that's the same thing that, that I thought.
Yeah.
But they, I asked the guys, what are you guys doing here? Told me, he says, yeah, he says, once we leave here, it said, you'll be seeing the cable on the polls within six months. So how's that happening?
Well, they, they, they've been paid. We've paid them considerable amounts of money to do this, so.
So they, they paid in full.
Were they, were they with charter?
Um, they were, they're, uh.
They would be matrix.
Subcontracted from Matrix.
Oh, they're matrix, okay.
Yep.
I know that I just got into.
So I wasn't clear on it because I didn't think we'd actually made any, you know.
So that, that project, um, we are just in the process of making some payments on that?
Yes.
We have not made them as of today.
Yeah.
So it's kinda interesting that they would go ahead and start the work in advance of payments.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. Figured I'd ask.
Yep.
We do have, um, Mass, Massachusetts Broadband Extension Group that has put out their feelers. They're looking for people to have conversations with them about their communities. So we'll definitely be in touch with them, um, and hope that that's going to help us as well, but I don't know. It's, uh, been a, it's been a long, prolonged, protracted battle with the, with the cable provider to get, you know, those individual homes taken care of.
I know I sent, uh, I believe to Greg a while ago, some information about the Digital Equity Act.
Yes.
And, uh, some CMRPC, uh, could potentially help us through, through that, at least to. I, I know the first step would be assessment and survey, which I know, you know, no one gets excited about. But it, there is the possibility that we could have some, um, some help through that from, from, well, through the state, but from the, the federal, um, infrastructure bills that were passed.
Well, uh, yeah, I, I mean, do you think CMRPC, do you have a person we can contact there?
Um, so the person who's actually leading that recently left there, so I need to find out who that went to.
Okay.
But I have someone there I can find out from.
Okay, any help, any help we would welcome with open arms. I just feel that, um, we're, it's not, it's not worth their while.
Yeah.
So they're, they're, they're reluctant to really put a lot of effort into it because we're not gonna be able to just say, oh gee, Comcast is on the same street, we'll use them.
And, and the other, the other nice part too, the digital equity part would look at that, but it would also look at our town website and things along those lines and making sure it's accessible to everyone. So I think there could be some, some good things that could come out of that. Can make sure I find that person and get them in contact.
Appreciate it. Any correspondence, Greg?
No.
Okay, we have no correspondence of need to comment on approved sign in October special state electric warrants. Okay, special state election warrant we have from the town clerk, I believe.
Do you have it here?
I think it's just a boilerplate.
Yeah, um, it's, uh, yes, that for the purposes of the senator and the general court.
Yeah.
Yeah, Worcester Hampshire District.
And this would just be for the, uh, primary.
Yeah, and this is just indicating where precinct one is located, where precinct two is located for the vote, which is not any change. And so obviously, uh, we have a motion to approve, or the, um, what do we call this?
The, um, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three state primary election.
Allen, or location, I guess.
Yep. And then, uh, the time on here, seven AM to eight PM, that's set by the state, correct?
Yes.
Yes. We have a motion?
Uh, yeah, oh, we would make the motion to approve the, uh, state ballot for Tuesday, October tenth. For the polls to open from seven AM to eight PM.
We have a motion made, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion made in seconds to approve that document submitted, uh, from the town clerk for the, uh, election on Tuesday, the tenth of October, which is the primary for the senator and the general court for the Hampshire and Worcester district. Those in favor?
Aye.
Right, and we need your signatures. I think there's like eight of them left or something.
Yeah, there's a handful.
Okay, we'll get it at the end of the week. Okay, moving along. Municipal vehicle policy, discussion and revision.
Support members, uh, there's a copy of the policy that I put in the packet. It was last looked at back in, uh, it was twenty fifteen. And, um, the policy is largely, largely unchanged, but, um, I did include several items that I think are relevant to two thousand and twenty-three. And they're really relevant concerning, um, insurance liability in conversations with the town's insurance carrier. Um, town, town employees are intended to be transported in town vehicles. So if you turn to the second page of the rules governing use, um, I added the following language. Under no circumstances are children to be transported for liability reasons. We're not in the business of transporting families in town vehicles. And I think that something is implied, but it needs to be explicitly stated to make sure that we don't end up in a situation that could be some liability risk to the town. And then on page three, um, an additional language under numbers fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. All municipal vehicles except unmarked vehicles needed by law enforcement shall have the Barry Town seal affixed and visible, minimum of ten inches. The windows of all municipal vehicles shall not have additional window tinting installed except unmarked vehicles needed by law enforcement. And then lastly, sixteen, new vehicles purchased shall include GPS tracking ability, including necessary software.
So new would be subsequent to the, um, policy, acceptance of the policy?
That's correct. So we're not gonna go back retroactively. Um, these things can be installed, um, before the vehicles are sold versus us going ahead and installing at a later date.
Okay, um, so that would be going forward.
Yeah, that's correct. I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, the, the change, no, under no circumstances are children to be transported for liability reasons. Um, I would, I would think it might be appropriate to sit in, except in emergency situation.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, I, 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 I can't think of necessarily one at the, off the top of my head. But having school bus transportation for kids for years and years and years. There were all kinds of situations where we had to pick up non-school passengers because of an accident on the road. And, you know, we're going by the thing and the police stop us and say, you're taking these two people, you're keeping them warm and you're taking them to wherever you're going. So I just think that, um, except in emergency situations. I do think it would be useful to, um, provide this policy to those areas of, to the police and so forth for review if they have any concerns and questions. I do know that there's special language, I think, in the chief of police's contract, as we did, did it recently. And I think in the fire chief's, um, contract about their use of their personal vehicle.
There is. They, they have specific language and, um, it's only them.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And, um, as everything else, um, as far as the vehicles, Greg, uh, town property?
Yeah, so any, any and all town property, vehicles, uh, buildings, uh, personal property, all of that comes under the control of the Board of Slackmen. So the Slackmans are the custodian of all public property, including vehicles. So the question you may have is, is this appropriate to all departments? The answer to that would be yes.
Except, except for the police is, is.
Right, as, as, as.
Individual contract.
The chiefs and individual contracts.
Yep. Uh, so no children, uh, to be transported. Uh, the only thing I, situation I can think of where I see that sometimes come up is, um, during, let's say, parades. Is, are we, you know, not even during parades?
Well, I mean, they were all in the fire trucks and everything then.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I mean, that's why I think we have to have the community, you know, look at it because they, when they do, um, touch a truck and all those kinds of things. Uh, they're, you know, we encourage kids to understand, you know, the pieces of equipment and all of that. So what we're not trying to do.
Touch a truck, there's not, the trucks aren't moving. That would be, that'd be quite an event if they were.
Yeah, but you're right. During parades, there, there's always children in the fire truck and there's children in the police cruisers and there's children. Because it's a big deal.
I would say you have to define emergency. I mean.
Well, emergency is an emergency. Emergency.
Yeah, it'd have to be an emergency, emergency.
And it can, do you, do you have any kind of, um, information from our insurance company as to what their, um, idea is about traveling? You know, having family members or other children?
They frown upon that because it means that there's another potential liability if there's an accident.
So they tell you not to do it.
And they say specifically their concern is with kids and children, for whatever reason. I don't, I don't know the reason why. But they really was motivated in conversations with the insurance company. Um, was asked to take a look at this policy and spoke with the insurance company and their concern. Their only concern was to make sure that the vehicles were for official purposes and, um, they don't become family vehicles.
Yeah, well, I will, I will say, you know, to what John said, I know at the Christmas parade.
Yeah.
It couldn't have been a worse day, weather wise, I have, you have to say. But at any rate, um, the chief, for example, had his wife and had his daughter in the cruiser. And, you know, during the course of the parade and offered me a ride in the rain as well, which I didn't take, figuring I could walk.
So maybe you add the word celebratory in addition to emergency.
Yeah, celebratory events.
Celebratory events.
Cause I mean, you know, they're.
Slow moving, not to see.
Well, really, they're really creeping around the corner.
Slow.
Yeah.
Walking slow.
Walking.
Well, I mean, I think for the most part, um, there's, uh, not a lot of abuse of this of the fire department. I don't know. Maybe they're, maybe the kids are all going to picnics on it. I don't know. I don't think so, but, um, one never knows.
I think back to my childhood and a lot of the situations for me, it was, you know, I'd end up in the back of my dad's truck at a scene because, you know, he was trying to save someone's life, you know? Um, it generally wasn't, uh, you know, an ambulance or a fire truck, but, you know, weird situations would come up where there's the potential to save a life and, you know, you're a kid and you, you sit there and you don't look at that car accident behind you, you know?
Well, I, yeah, um, so can you get that to the department heads and?
Um, a couple more questions on it before we, we wrap it up. Uh, so windows of municipal vehicles, uh, shall not have additional window tinting except unmarked vehicles needed by law enforcement. Do, are marked vehicles excluded as well? Or is there, there anything regarding marks?
Well, the chief would come in and, and to meet with you and impressed upon you that, that his fleet cruisers do have window tinting.
Yeah.
It's up to you as to whether you think that's something that's.
Well, there must be a reason they do that.
They're very, well, they're very dark. If you can't identify the officer in there, you, they shouldn't really have it. They only have one now that, uh, I think of the pickup truck has leftover tint. The other ones they scraped off. Um, but, um, I don't think, I think the officer should be in full view. That's what I think. Um, in the wintertime, you get salt on the roads, it comes up, gets in, you know, with the tint and it's, gets to be difficult. It's a safety thing as well.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, I mean.
I mean, other, anything other than, um, factory window tint, like our, our, uh, I believe the Ford Explorer is, is fairly dark, but it's factory and, uh, legal.
Yeah.
I think that should be the, I think thirty-five percent or whatever.
I'm guessing if this is an issue, they might bring it up and we can indicate our concerns about.
Yeah, I think I just wanted to, to understand why it was specified as unmarked vehicles. If there was a specific reason, I think we could try to understand that better.
Bus to game purposes or something.
Now, if you're, if you're the fire chief, let's just say the fire chief, and your daughter is playing hockey. I'm just making up a sport. Your daughter's playing hockey and the chief is technically always on duty. And so the chief goes to the hockey game, not to bring his daughter there, but to watch the, the, the thing, the event and is with his vehicle. And I'm, I don't mean to say the fire chief does this, please, he's not even in the country. I mean, is that a legitimate use of the, of the, because if we need him, he's got the vehicle and he heads to where we need him.
Were you talking, were you back on the, um?
Back on the first one?
No, not on the children, just that they, um, they, we have to have a provision where, I miss what the town's job description, man, or consistent with the department report. So an employee function, we can decide what that employee function is and where they should, they, they can take the vehicle.
As far as police and fire, is it contractual?
Well, well, and, and, anybody, anybody.
Their contract is, is laid out.
Anybody, anybody who has a, a town vehicle. I don't know who has, is.
Well, if it, the way it all, um, it's already, if you, if you read the first.
Yeah, excluding the police and the fire. Okay, whose employment is regulated by collective bargaining agreement.
The policy that's down right here.
It is the policy of the town. Positions require employees to access municipal vehicles either during or after twenty minutes.
I mean, this is old.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all, it's all old language.
Full language, huh? Nothing changing now.
Uh, and then one more I just wanted to, I have a little discussion on is number twelve. Uh, it says, no employee may use a municipal vehicle for out of state use without advanced approval of the town administrator. Uh, one of the concerns that was brought up while discussing this.
Oh, the sewer stuff.
Yeah, is that there are situations where, uh, sludge is being transported, if I'm, I believe it was sludges, yeah. Um, where places in state aren't accepting it and it's a, a specific day, you don't know until that day. And then you'd have to take it out of state to, to get.
New Hampshire, I think.
Yeah, New Hampshire. Um, so where it says advanced approval, you know, if no one's available to prove it that day, would we be able to? And this might already cover it the way it's written, but have advanced.
We're talking about personal use now. That's not, that's like within the, you're talking about.
It just says no employee may use.
No, 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 this is, this, because this policy applies to all municipal vehicles. So this is for, this says no employee may use a municipal vehicle for out of state use without advanced approval of the town administrator. So this is talking to all uses of all vehicles, not just personal use of vehicle. Uh, so the way it says though, without advanced approval, um, is that necessarily a case by case basis? Or can we give, you know, blanket advanced approval for this purpose in this situation? And then just have it reported back type of thing? Should we clarify that better or does this sufficient to cover that, in your opinion? I guess is the question.
Well, I think we have to be realistic about it. And I mean, if there's abuse, that's one thing. If it's just somebody doing something that's in the best interest of the community to pick up, pick up, I don't know, parts of a vehicle that they can only get in Connecticut, that they, to fix a vehicle, I mean, I, I think that the department head should be authorized to allow that to happen.
So we might want to adjust this to allow approval of department head instead of approval of town administrator? I guess that's kind of...
I have no problem with the town administrator.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm, I'm guessing when we send this out for people to take a look at, I mean, I mean, I don't think the dog officer, because of the animal control officer, because that's kind of a jointly...
Yeah, that's regional, that's outside of our...
Yeah, it's a regional kind, it's a little different. I mean, you know, there'll be some comments and concerns and they'll bring them back to us and we can either tweak it or not.
Yeah, well, this is just one of the comments and concerns that was brought up.
Yeah.
Yeah, and from, for all I know, there may be comments and concerns with, with this stuff, language that's been in here for eighteen or twenty years.
Right, right.
And it's probably not been distributed very much over the period of time.
And I don't know if there's, if they're actually doing the alcohol required by the Department of Transportation. Is that to keep their licenses valid?
I'm sorry, where are you?
I'm down to number seven.
Well, we need to establish checks on the licenses regularly as well. We don't, I don't know if we even do that.
Yeah, so, so we're required, anyone that has a CDL?
Must be tested.
They, there's a testing requirement per U.S. DOT regulations.
So they must be doing it?
My presumption is yes.
Yeah, if you get pulled over and you haven't, you know, you're driving any commercial vehicle, you haven't, don't have your, you know, DOT card. I've literally been in that situation, so...
No, I'm just eager to have, you know, that our department heads look at it and make sure that they have concerns or questions or whatever, we get that feedback before we finalize the policy.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's something that I assume department heads or possibly town administrator would be on top of, making sure that people are keeping their, their DOT cards up to date.
Up to date, yeah. I mean, you say when they get pulled over, I understand, I have trucks, so... But you kind of have a pass a lot when you have municipal plates, they don't mess with municipal plates very often.
Yeah, I didn't have municipal plates.
So what, what I'm trying to say is, we should have a policy in place to check, you know, the DOT, you know, cards and make sure we have everything, I mean, that should, that should have been done a long time ago, I don't know why it wasn't.
Well, they may, they may be doing it, for all we know.
I think that's the question, is determining if it's being done.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll send this out?
Yeah, I'll revise it and send that out.
And just, and just ask them for, you know, obviously to take an opportunity to review it and any concerns or questions they should put in writing?
Yeah, because I would, I'm just looking at under number eight. It talks about influence about all the new drugs, prescription drugs and medications. Certainly cannabis has crept its way into the, into the situation and we have a right to say that we don't want our employees who are using cannabis to be driving our vehicles, even though it's legal, it's not something that we...
Well, it's to be under the influence, I don't think we can stop them from using it on the weekend, but...
Correct, but they, but they shouldn't be using it while they're on other vehicles.
Right.
As far as the identification, I mean, vehicles like our fire chief's car is blacked out. You wouldn't know that that's a fire chief.
Mm-hmm.
That should have full identification on that, as far as being a fire car. I don't know why, all of the towns have it, I don't know why we don't. So I think that's, that has to be, and it should be a certain timeline on this too as well. We're not going to be looking at this another year saying, "Oh, yeah, we forgot to do it."
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
The thing, the thing that is some troubling thing to me is that just like we got into some difficulty on the bylaw for providing...
This is already, this is old.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, there is no place in here where there talks about the fact that this is a requirement. It's not a policy that we say, "This would be nice if you wanted to do it," which is, I think, the way in which it is about, you know...
It's in the personnel policy.
It doesn't matter. If they're not, if you have a personnel policy, but we have made no effort to take to every employee, this is the policy book, this is what you're responsible for, and have them sign that they've had the opportunity to read it, they understand it. And if there's something that they feel is inappropriate or that they should have more training in, they have the right to ask for that. We've, we've done none of that.
When they, when they're hired and they've, they've signed the thing that says all, what are they, how are they, administrative and financial policies, and they've signed it, what does that mean?
It means that they're just following...
Administrative.
They're just following, okay, a thing saying, "Yeah, okay, they, they told me when I have to come to work and how many days I have off for vacation." It is our obligation as the Board of Selectmen to say, "This is the personnel, or the personnel bylaws." We have an obligation to make sure that they know it, that they have gotten training in it if they need it and that they are up to date in ones that we all agree on. And I would say that has not happened in probably eons in this community.
And how, how would we go about doing that, I guess is the question?
Well, I mean, in the, in the world that I work in and lived with, okay, there is a personnel book. It is passed out to you. If you are a new employee, there is an orientation. You sit there and it is not fun and they drone through the policies, you know? Am I wrong? They drone through policies and they say, "Do you have questions on the policy? You are going to be an employee who will have access to our town vehicles. Do you have any question on this?" And you're usually required to initial the policies that impact you directly. And then you sign that you have read and had training and the training was provided on these days by this person and blah, blah, blah. And then there is a review of these on some sort of, you know, maybe an annual basis, which is cursory. But if there's a change in a policy, there is that, everybody sits down, everybody hears what, what the policy says. And then the, the idea is, if you fail to adhere to this policy, you, you know, the, the, things could be possible disciplinary action or termination.
This is what, we start with this?
Well, I mean, it's okay to start with it, but you have to say to the people that this is going to be, okay, something that we're going to take very seriously. Here's the old policy.
We have to, it is town property.
Well, I agree with you, but you, but you just can't sit and talk about it here without really taking and enforcing it.
I understand that, that's what we need to do.
I'm trying to think of that with this procedurally, how we, we put this together. So effective, essentially it could be, you know, once a year, town administrator reviews all of these documents with department heads, they sign off and then they review it with all...
And then the employees all... The employees all sign off on it as well. Because if, for example, an employee had, had an accident or something and was in violation of a, of a town policy, and we said, "This employee, he's suing us, but he is in violation." And they, they will say, "Find a senior personnel sheet where you've, where you've..." I mean, I've been through this a hundred times. "When did you tell the teacher that he couldn't do this? When did you say, who, who trained him?
If you have a document where they initialed next to it saying they read and understand that section...
I mean, we do that with the student handbook, with the ten-year-old. So I'm just saying that you have to give them an opportunity to look at the policy and then we have to provide the training or the, probably, I hate to say it again, but probably the town administrator would provide the training.
I mean, is it realistic to have some form of training in place by, say, the beginning of next year?
Oh, absolutely not, it should be easy, it should be easy. If you, if you, but you've got to say, what policies are really the most important ones? And this is an important one, so you say, "Okay, this is definitely part of the employee handbook." Because that's what you're talking about, an employee handbook, in which you say, "Here are your benefits, here are your responsibilities, here's the one you have to get a new license, here's when you have to do this, here's when you have to do that." And everybody knows and everybody will say, "Did you have to sit through that?" They should be complaining bitterly about the fact, "Oh, I have to go up to that thing again today or this week or this year." But you just can't keep these secret in a book somewhere and think that people know them. I mean, you can, and then you can say, "We're firing you because of blah, blah, blah." And they go, "I didn't even know that was a rule." And we have no way of proving that they didn't know it was a rule. I mean, a fourteen-year-old would take me on and say, "I didn't know I couldn't do that in that bathroom." Yeah, because some of it you think is just, everybody should know that.
All right, so we need to work on orientation and policy review procedure?
Yeah.
I think that's...
And I will tell you, the current employees have not had training in any of this. None of it. So they've just, they've just done what used to be done, what, what past practice is.
Yep.
And most of the time it's kind of okay, but some places we really need to make better decisions.
All right. I think that's a great step forward for the town.
Okay, so can we have a motion to move this policy to review by the, shall we say, employees in the community?
I would move to submit the changes of this policy for review by the public and employees of the town.
And that we would do this and complete this by, say, a thirty-day period, within the next thirty days? Will...
A thirty-day review period by the public. So we'll, we'll leave it open for comment for at least thirty days, is what you're saying, right?
Well, I mean, you can do it for fewer, but it's really...
But to give people an opportunity to review, look at it, we'll, we'll post it somewhere online.
By October eighteenth, we should be, we're, we're ready to go.
Yeah, so the next meeting after that thirty-day period, we take it up again.
Yeah, and you vote it.
Okay.
Okay. Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to...
Or we make changes and put it out for review, kind of, if needed.
Or, so we say, we have a thirty-day review period and effective, it starts today and will culminate on the thirtieth day subsequent to this meeting.
Yes.
Those in favor?
Yep.
All right, all right. Okay, so we, we have, this is our first policy going through a process. Technically, we should have a policy that is the policy to create new policies.
Policy, policy.
Well...
Now, as far as...
We'd be laughing, I'll raise some...
A question on that, as far as that goes, like the seal, putting a seal on the, that, I don't think, you know, the people that are, they're not...
Well, I, I agree, I think...
They're driving, they, they should just, we should just make sure that it's done. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
That's not, you know what I mean, that's not...
Well, that's already part of the existing policy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's not, no.
The seal is new.
Yep.
Wouldn't that be required by DOT anyway?
No, I'm told the municipal, for some reason municipal plates, they don't, that's what I was told. I don't know, I don't know the law on it.
But, I mean, surprising, but either way, they should be marked.
Most towns have the seal so that identifies the vehicle as municipal vehicle, which the public wants to see.
Is paying for.
They're paying for it, they want to see it.
Do you have, I'm, I'm sure you do have some colleagues that would probably have a policy book that has maybe a little more up-to-date, that we might take and, and sort of just walk through, whether it be...
Board policies or personnel policies?
Personnel policies.
Personnel.
Or board, or both. Because I know there's some stuff out there already and reinventing the wheel sort of is a little bit of a waste of our time.
That's true. Although we do, we do have a lot of policies that no one seems to really know much about.
Well, exactly, and they're, they're decades old, is my guess.
Yeah, somewhere between two thousand, two thousand and five to present.
So, I mean, I, I think we can, you know, do some compare and contrast and say, you know, what, what is the most up-to-date things that we haven't even addressed.
Right. It's mind, it's mindsetting, at some point there was a personnel board that the town meeting vested the authority of the personnel board into the Selectmen and the Selectmen designated the town administrator to be the personnel administrator.
Okay.
Those are probably the policies that should be looked at first.
Yeah, okay.
Because those have the most risk for our employees and for the town.
Yeah. Okay, all right, do we, we've just, Vince, with this policy? Road paving list, John, I think I'm going to throw that one right over to you.
Sure, we have a road paving list. It has been discussed at DPW Commission. Well, actually, we should stop before we do that because this road paving list is dependent on our material bids and that's actually before road paving, this is material bids.
Do you want to walk us through the material bids as well?
I certainly can, try to.
Certainly, Greg, if you'd like to do that.
John, I can, I can, because that was part of the, part of the bid process. So the bids were opened back on September sixth. And you have the breakdown of the bids that are here. And I'm just going to read through the ones that are the motion for award. So it would be washed and screened sand per ton, RJ McDonald at twenty dollars delivered. The screened sand per ton, again, RJ McDonald, delivered at twenty dollars a ton. Crushed stone per ton, the winning bid would be RJ McDonald at eighteen dollars per ton and three-quarter inch at twenty dollars per ton. Bank and processed gravel per ton, all awarded to RJ McDonald. Bank at plant fifteen dollars per ton, bank delivered at seventeen dollars a ton. Processed gravel at plant fifteen dollars a ton and processed gravel delivered seventeen dollars per ton. The rubber or crack filling per gallon, fiber been awarded to Indus at thirteen dollars and twenty-six cents. The rubber crack filling also awarded to Indus at twenty-three seventeen per gallon. The full death reclamation, Allstate's asphalt at three dollars and twenty cents. Milling per square yard, mass broken stone at two dollars and seventy-four cents. Just make note, there's a change in the next one after I spoke to the DPW director. The tuminous concrete per ton at plant, polymer paving at eighty-nine dollars per ton. And I did speak with the director and he indicated to me that the proximity of the plant means, provides that this cost would be less costly to the town to be able to obtain it in the plant versus driving to the other location and I did happen to agree with that. Delivered in place would be the mass broken stone at ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents. Coal patch per ton at plant, polymer paving at one hundred thirty-five dollars per ton. And then another change is on the equipment rental. I thought we could kind of go through and cherry pick the different rates and accept only the bids from each individual contractor. But in speaking with the director, he advised me correctly that sometimes equipment isn't available and you need to go to the second vendor. So his thought was, is that to the extent the board can award the bid to each of the amounts that are seen here, he will obviously go to the lowest vendor first. But if for some reason the lowest vendor does not have a piece of equipment available on a certain day when it's needed, he will then need to go to the second highest bidder. And I think that's an appropriate use of our money. So it would be RJ McDonald, RJ Salvador and Allstate's asphalt. And the items would be chip spreader with operator, vibratory roller without operator, vibratory roller with operator, ten-wheel dump truck with operator, tri-axle dump truck with operator, trailer dump with operator, bulldozer with operator, crusher with operator, loader, rubber tire, three-yard with operator, hydraulic excavator with operator, backhoe, rubber tiered, tired with operator. The bid spec did provide detail in terms of what these items were. So if you look through and you say, "What's the best specification?" The bid itself did enumerate the minimum requirements for these pieces of equipment. And I think that someone who may be listening may have some questions in terms of that. So this, my office did issue the bid, so, and like I said, those are the recommendations.
And your recommendation would be to accept the bids as is described and provided for in this document?
I do, and then we'll proceed with getting the contract signed and before the board.
Okay, we, we need a motion?
I would move to accept the bids as shown in this document.
We have a motion made and to accept the bids?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded now to adopt the bids as presented and reviewed by our town administrator. Those in favor?
Aye.
Right? We have those and you'll proceed with the nuts and bolts of getting those set to go. We can now move to the proposed road projects. I worry a little at the timeframe of the, this year, we're already in September, so I don't know exactly whether these are in order of first come?
I don't know what order these would be done in. My, my guess is that more of them would be next spring. This is for the fiscal year, so it is fall and spring. And I believe any that we do approve that aren't done will carry over to any future fiscal years. And our chapter ninety money, if, you know, we have some allocated towards some of these projects, if it's not done this fiscal year, will carry over to the next fiscal year. That being said, I'll read off the list that we have. And these estimates for cost were just put together based on these new bids that we got in. So these, these would be the most up-to-date estimates that we have for the cost for each of these projects. So the first one would be Washburn Road, West End only. It'd be a reclaim with drainage improvements. Uh, be a reclaim, uh, with drainage improvements, uh, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, Washburn Road, Pleasant Street End, uh, reclaim with drainage improvements for a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Allen Hill Road, uh, reclaim with drainage improvements for a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Cut Off Road, reclaim drainage improvements, two hundred and six thousand dollars. Cummings Road, uh, reclaim drainage improvements for eighty-two thousand. Grogan Road, reclaim drainage improvements for a hundred and thirty-four thousand. And then there's also a Kamatsu WA three twenty loader that, uh, was recommended. That would be two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Did you know, was this voted by the commission? I don't believe the commission voted to, to, um, and we have to take care of that.
I, I'm still unclear what the commission votes for versus what the select board votes for regarding.
Okay.
Chapter ninety funds. I'm not entirely clear on that. I don't know if.
You can informally take their recommendation, but you are the road commissioners and as the road commissioners, just like we have the final say.
I just didn't, we, to my knowledge, we did not, that was mentioned, but it wasn't, you know, recommended by the, it wasn't voted by the nine members.
The Kamatsu?
Yeah.
So, um, the director, I asked him to give me a little bit of explanation. He said he thinks that, uh, this is his words, I think it's imperative that we fund the new front end loader with this list. The loader's been on the capital improvement plan for the last fifteen years.
Probably shouldn't.
It needs to be replaced. The last study that the town had done for capital improvement plan recommended it to be paid for with chapter ninety funds. Uh, if the board has another source of funds, that's fine, but, um, we need to order it now as the lead time for the new order could be extensive.
Okay. And he's pretty, pretty, uh, sure of the price? I just, um, if, I have no problem with that, where, if this is within our jurisdiction to do without a recommendation from the commission, but, um, it appears that, um, we won't meet with them for another two, two weeks?
Yeah, so I, I did ask that this be put on the last agenda for the commission.
Yeah.
So if it wasn't put on, it's not because.
I don't remember.
We forgot about it.
Yeah, I don't remember.
There was, um, discussion on it, probably not the previous one, but the meeting before. And that was the extent of the discussion. There, there was some discussion about the loader at the last one.
But it was not.
But there was no vote taken.
But I don't think, um, there was any, um, motion to, to move forward with it. Not that we can't do that without their recommendation, but just to bring that up to you.
I have a question about one of the, actually, a road we had a petition on, um, that's not on here.
Which one? Which one was that?
That would have been, um, hold.
Oh, that was exactly what we.
It was a petition on that.
Yes.
It seemed to be, get some attention.
Well, it may, but, I mean, we've had petitions on Grogan Road, Cut Off Road and Washburn Road for years. So, I mean, it's sort of there in line, they would be in line. It is a rough road. I mean, I've been over it many times.
I'm just bringing it up.
Yep.
And Town Farm is another one that.
Yeah.
My rec.
Well, yeah, that's always from it though. But I'm sorry.
There was some drainage improvements that were required as part of that project. And I don't recall the reasons as to why, but I remember that being an issue as to why those drainage improvements had to be done in advance of any rule.
I don't know anything about it, I'm just bringing it up.
Yep.
Yeah.
I know that Grogan Road is probably, hopefully, um, that and Washburn Road, those have, they've been on the list and those people have been patiently waiting for probably two or three years, waiting for their turn to be on this list. Allen Hill Road, I thought that this was, the people who live there and Carter Stevens, Carter Stevens who used the road had said they didn't want it to be, it needs drainage improvements, I guess, but they didn't want it to be, um, hard talked. But I don't know, so.
I've heard that as well.
I hope you guys are not. So I would suspect that the timeframe for these projects is, a couple of them may be before the, the plants close.
Yeah, depending on how the winter goes. Yeah, Grogan Road, I've certainly heard a lot about. So, um, but, uh, just to finish going through this, uh, for future planning, uh, they wanted to have Williamsville Road on there, which Eddie, which of course comes down to the water plan there. You know, assuming that would be done before it gets paved. And that would be another two hundred and ninety thousand, uh, for the paving of Williamsville Road using chapter ninety after the water improvements would be done there.
They're saying that the water improvements are a million dollars.
Right, so the water improvements are, are kind of a question mark, as far as I understand. And that's, uh, so that's why this was, I believe that's why this was listed under for future planning. Um, because that wouldn't, that would need funding for the, the water lines before that would happen.
And it looks like, uh, we certainly with, if we were to do all of these within this fiscal year, do we have enough chapter ninety to do it?
Uh, not including Williamsville?
Yeah, well, I would say not including Williamsville at this point.
So, uh, with our chapter ninety available balance right now, which is five hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-nine and what's anticipated for fiscal year twenty-four, but the state has not actually set in stone yet, because they're still doing their thing, uh, which is four hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven. Uh, that puts us at about one million, four thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven, uh, in available chapter ninety. Uh, what's on this list is one million, ninety-four thousand, so we'd be about ninety thousand dollars short. Not including Williamsville.
If there, there's some of these, obviously, if Allen Hill doesn't get in the mix.
Right, then that would take care of that.
We're not anywhere near ready for the, um, Williamsville.
Yep. Yeah, so we could take Allen Hill off and Williamsville, unfortunately, as much as we all want that.
I think there's some drainage stuff that has to be done up there on Allen Hill, but I'm not sure if that's, um, how, what the price would be on that.
I, I'm assuming the drainage improvements in here would include that.
Yeah.
So I, I assume the reclaim and drainage improvements, because chapter ninety will cover drainage improvements, it won't cover water and sewer. So I assume that's part of the hundred and eight thousand dollar price for that. Um, so, I mean, I believe we could approve more than what we have chapter ninety for, and then it would just come down to the DPW using their judgment until we run out, until we receive more the following year, or I think it might be more, you know. Or the other option is, would be to edit this list, to, take the ones that we want to prioritize, if we don't want to prioritize Allen Hill, for example, and give them an amount below our chapter ninety balance. Um, and again, this is just what's expected for twenty-four. There's a possibility it could go up. I don't know how likely that is. Um, unfortunately, it is the lowest amount we've seen for chapter ninety since two thousand and eleven. So it seems to be going down pretty consistently with the exception of nineteen and twenty, where there was supplemental funding. So, I'm not sure why the state, why, why that's happening. But that is where chapter ninety is at for this year, or is expected to be at, so. Um, yeah, so.
So, uh, is the opportunity at this point, Greg, that we will, um, vote to approve the road projects included herein? And that the ones that will be handled first will be up to the DPW, um, department?
I think that's fair.
Should we leave off, um, any of these projects to bring it under?
Well, I think you should, I think you should just leave off, you know, Williamsville Road. Because if you have to wait for the water drainage thing, that's, that's, they're, they're starting to look around for some grants and so forth for that.
Right.
I don't, I don't, I don't expect to see us even attacking Williamsville Road.
Yeah, so that still leaves this list ninety thousand over.
Oh, it does? Okay.
Yeah. With Williamsville, it'll be three hundred and eighty over, three hundred and eighty thousand over, I should be clear.
What are the thoughts on, um, finding another creative way to, uh, finance a Kamatsu WA three twenty and to take the whole two, hundred and thirty thousand dollars? Is there any, you know, any thoughts on that? I mean, because that's dumping a lot of money down on a piece of equipment that, you know, um, typically it's, the money is for the roads.
Well, I would, I would say.
Chapter ninety can go for a lot of things, between roads, equipment.
I understand, I understand it all, I do.
Roadway design as well.
Yep.
I mean, you could, you could take the, certainly, because this is probably a twenty year buy, right? I would say we wouldn't replace this for twenty years of, okay.
That's right.
You could take this out of stabilization.
Then you got that much more for the roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, which would leave us.
I mean, that's what stabilization is sort of for.
Right. And then if Williamsville does work out sooner than later, that would leave us with a good portion of it, it wouldn't cover all of it, um, so that would be.
And we already get what they want, you know?
Yep.
Well, everybody gets what they need.
Need, yeah, sorry.
Because I think you can take pretty much Allen Hill out of there. And you can take, if you take, if we take the loader out of there and put it in stabilization.
So you, you would recommend taking Allen Hill out specifically?
I, I would just say that there is no, um, individuals, there's, there's two individuals who live on the road. They are both anathema to doing anything to that road. The thing that has to happen, I believe, in order to stave Old Stage Road, they need some drainage improvements on the bottom of that hill. You know, because it's really, I guess, it's not any good drainage there. I mean, trust me, no one from Allen Hill is gonna come looking for us and say, how come you didn't pave that? They're gonna come looking for us if we paved it, I think.
So that would.
Well, one other question I have on the, John, you spoke a little bit about it, I brought it up at the DPW meeting. We're really slack on road maintenance, pavement maintenance here. Couldn't we, um, save a little money to, um, go for extending the life of, of roads?
Yeah, we could, we could certainly, um, look into pavement management strategies and pavement management plans there are.
Because if you got three miles of road a year, you know what I mean, you got a hundred and seventeen miles of road, these low, these roads gotta last for forty years?
Yeah, there, there are classes that, um, someone from our DPW could go to, to learn more about that.
Yep.
There's also companies that come in and, uh, will assess all of the paved roads in your town, give you a strategy so that you can, you know, say, mill and overlay this one before it gets bad enough that it does need full.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, so there's, certainly, I, I believe chapter ninety could be used for that, I think that's.
I think we should look at some of that.
So, um, and then.
To gain something on it, maybe.
Yeah.
Because we're not gaining on the roads.
Right, and I mean, ultimately, you want to look at, you know, every year you lose one lane a year mile for every mile of road you have per lane. It's a weird term, but it's, it gets the point across, you know, and, uh, you want to make sure you're putting back, you know, we have, uh, how, I forget, how many miles of paved road is that?
Hundred and seventeen.
Hundred and seventeen.
That's what the DPW director said.
So, you know.
He probably knows.
Hundred and seventeen times two, we're losing two hundred and thirty-four lane year miles per year.
That's what I'm saying.
We gotta make sure we're putting back two hundred and thirty, you know, preserving or putting back somehow. Which, for most roads, when you're, when you're doing a full reconstruction, you know, you're, you're adding twenty years per lane mile to that. So you're adding, you know, if you're doing a mile of road, you're adding forty lane year miles, but.
Just the asphalt doesn't hold up these days, you know, it really doesn't.
Yeah, so, I just want to look real quick at, so assuming we then take out Allen Hill Road, which was a hundred and eight thousand, that brings our. Down. To nine eighty-six. And then if the loader were to come out of stabilization, now would that require a town vote, right?
Yes.
Take that from stabilization?
Does.
So that's something we would, we want to put on the next town meeting if we want to go that route.
And I don't know if we want to talk with the, um, budget and finance chair. You know, as we.
Oh, for sure.
As we think about the best ways to fund. I mean, it may be better that we go with chapter ninety only because our stabilization, while we have money in it and it's for those, these kinds of purchases, um, it's tough to build it up because there's so many needs that we have.
Yeah, so if we were to move those two things off of this list, that would leave us with two hundred and forty-nine thousand left in chapter ninety, which could go towards some sort of. Strategy, or it could be used to start a, um, a tip project, or, uh, if Williamsville can work out with the drainage, that covers not quite all of that, but a good portion of it. Say, seventy, eighty percent of it. So, um, with that said, I guess I would move to approve the road projects as listed without Allen Hill Road and without the Kamatsu Loader.
Understanding that we'll seek funding from a different source.
Yep, or approve it for chapter ninety funding later.
Later.
That will, will come back to the Kamatsu Loader either with alternate funding or look to approve that from chapter ninety at a later date. Uh, that's also with Williamsville Road not included as that's listed for future.
Right.
Year. So I've, I've moved to approve, including Washburn Road, West Street End only, Washburn Road, Pleasant Street End, Cut Off Road, Cummings Road and Grogan Road.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the, um, FY twenty-four road projects of Washburn Road, West End, Washburn Road, I guess it's East End, Allen Hill Road, no, Cut Off Road, yes. Cummings Road, yes. Grogan Road, yes. And, uh, that would be those roads that would be approved. The Kamatsu Loader, we would approve for a different funding source than chapter ninety at this point in time, uh, but we do recognize and approve the need. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it looks like now we're, we've taken care of the COVID pipe, well, we haven't taken care of it, we've at least met with the gentleman. Uh, two thousand, um, twenty-three and two thousand twenty, election worker appointment list. I believe that's in our packet. Uh, well, and I would seek a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four election worker appointment list as presented to us by the town clerk.
Are you seeking a motion or did you make a motion?
Well, I, I, you can just say so moved.
So moved.
We have a motion made and seconded, seconded, you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the, uh, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four election worker appointment list presented by the town clerk. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our thanks to those individuals who are seeking to be election workers. It's a very long, tiring day, I understand, and we appreciate their efforts, for sure. Okay, uh, COA appointment for Claire Adamidis as an associate member. That would be the Council on Aging Appointment. And Greg, you have any information on that?
Uh, she just contacted the office and said that she'd like to be considered, um, as an associate member. I was not aware of the fact that the COA had associate members.
Um, I don't, there's nothing in our bylaws for associate members. I don't know if something else has been approved.
I, I don't either.
I believe there are a couple.
Do you want, do you want to hold on to our next meeting and so we.
Yeah, there is full members that are available.
Yeah, okay, well, I think we should determine if an associate member is a position. Um, and then also consider that there are open positions for full members.
Well, I know that, um, I'm to contact an, an individual who I think may be, may be slotted for one of those jobs. And I think there's only one opening still, but, who has made application, so let me check on that too.
Well, I think it might be good also to just clarify how many seats are open and advertise that as well.
Okay, I think there's just one. We'll just, we'll just hold on that.
Yep.
Until our next meeting, after we've done a little research. Special advance application, Ruggles Lane, PTO, family fun night and parade. I was, I don't know.
October twenty-seventh.
I think this is all around the holiday of sorts. Um, all the, um, materials are available to us for review. We would need a motion to approve.
I just, I'm trying to understand, is this when they're expecting, uh, Halloween to take place for the whole town? Or is this a separate event?
Let me just check the date on that.
This, so this is the twenty-seventh, so I'm assuming that's the Friday before.
Friday before.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I believe actually later on our agenda, we have Halloween.
Trunk or treat thing.
Yes.
So there's.
I guess I'm confused if their intention is to have it the same night or if they're specifically trying to have it a separate night.
Halloween would be on the thirty-first.
Yeah.
So when we get to the agenda item.
That's trunk or treat is on the thirty-first.
That would be, that does not change, so thirty-first.
So they're doing family fun night and parade on, that's probably, they do the costumes.
Hmm, okay.
Stuff with the kids. And then, because the other one is trunk or treat and it's really, it's not a parade or anything, it's just kids going around.
Yeah.
So we have, um, we have all the.
Six fifteen.
All the data and. All the data and information for that night from the PTO. We would need a motion to approve their application.
So I just wanted to check where this is. So this is happening at Ruggles Lane?
Yes.
Okay. I would move to approve the Ruggles Lane PTO Halloween for October 27th.
We need a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the special event application for the Ruggles Lane PTO for family fun night and parade on October 27th. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It looks like we have a parade and a fun night. A Halloween trick or treat, that is generally run by the police department, I believe.
Right, and the chief of police recommends on October 31st between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m.
I believe that's the time we did last year as well?
Yes, which is consistent with our last hours.
We need a motion?
I would move to set Halloween trick and trunk or treats for 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on October 31st.
We have a motion, we need a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the Halloween trick or trunk treat hours for October 31st, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We can begin to put that out and let Sandy know that she can put that out, you know, on the, on our website, is, because parents often have questions about when that is and what time it is and so forth.
Okay.
Personnel, we have wage authorizations for Police Department Tyler Hosley, full-time officer going to $22.27 per hour, and a wage authorization for a library assistant, Erica Bedard, at $15.85.
I would move to approve Tyler Hosley for the Police Department to full-time patrolman at 22, 27 per hour.
Those in favor, those, a second, a motion, please?
Okay, it was written, uh, second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the new wage authorization for Tyler Hosley to be paid $22.27 per hour. Those in favor?
Aye.
We have a wage authorization request from the library director for an individual for a library assistant at the name of Erica Bedard, to her hourly rate salary at $15.85.
I'd move to approve the wage authorization for Erica Bedard for $15.85 for library assistant.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve that wage authorization request for Erica Bedard, a library assistant, to be at $15.85 per hour. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. Okay. Special events, we've taken care of. Personnel, we've taken care of. Old business, police auxiliary officer appointment. We have somebody for that?
Appointment, I didn't put the list in your packet, so
Oh, okay.
I would suggest that we just simply hold on that until
Hold it.
the meeting of the second. There's also some additional names that the chief has submitted to us.
Okay.
So rather than dealing with him at every meeting, we just do it one-on-one.
Okay.
Okay.
And could you explain to us, Greg, the Police Department server appointment?
Yeah, so I had a chance to chat with the, with the chief, and he did speak with CM Geeks, who's our consultant, and he looked through his records, and I went through our records, and we couldn't find any data agreement for data storage or maintenance of agreements. There previously was a shared position between Barry and Rutland related to IT going back
Long ways.
seven years, let's say. But we, we couldn't find anything. I know that from my past job, much of the equipment, the, the computer equipment is provided on a grant through the State 911 Commission, but those agreements would be with the town of Rutland, it wouldn't be with the town of Barry. So we, we could not find any agreement that in fact would prevent us or put us in a position where we have to repay something back for those. That's what you asked for, and that's what we worry with the vote.
Okay.
Can you, this brought to my attention, what was it? It's blown through my mind. Come back to me, I hope.
Are you recommending that we take action on that?
Well, the chief, the chief seemed pretty passionate that this was something that he felt was helpful to the town. I support that. I think, you know, he gave us a quote, it was $48 or $49 hundred. If you're going to approve it, I just indicate that the amount not to exceed $5,000, which is a number that we can set aside in the ARPA fund to be able to accomplish this.
Again, my ARPA funds.
We'll deduct these from the, from the amount of ARPA funding that we have.
We'll pay it back when our allowance comes in. Is that the, is that what you were saying before? Pay it back when the allowance comes in, or something along those lines?
No, no, she just said, pay it back when I get home.
Yes.
That never happened.
I think I'm missing a reference, but that's all right. Well, I would move to approve the Police Department server for an amount not to exceed $5,000.
We have a motion made to approve the server
Uh, second, oh, no.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve not to exceed $5,000 for the, what